Vanessa and I have been trying to find. You might like. Because it could be like a fire station. I'm just thinking of the fire station. We're trying to find $10,000 for Neon Science for the Greenwood Farm Station.
Yes, well, the Main Street.
For like the Main Street. For the Main Street, as part of like their Main Street program. Just trying to decide about funders or foundations that they don't. Like maybe even for a 5K. Just like top one. So it's like placemaking is for a fire station. It's part of the Main Street. It's beautification.
It's a fire station.
It's on Pine. It's like timer. So just trying to think of like. I have like all these lists of foundations, but it's maybe just trying to think of one. Again, it's a beautification, placemaking, fire station. So I was trying to figure out who's. I'm trying to find $10,000 for Neon Science for the fire station. Any ideas? I've like been looking at the county.
You might as well just spend the year, year and a half.
Placemaking, fire stations. Have you just been hitting up like?
15. 10 is Green. This is Station 10. So it's just right down from the Seale Library, right down from the old.
On Pine.
On Pine.
It's between MOK and Greenwood.
Do you know, are there any funds where that's like one thing?
It's on, it's on, it's on the south side of the street.
So it's like a, so a fire station, a beautification, placemaking, a story. What about Burnston Foundation? They kind of like beautification stuff.
With Bernstein or Burnston. Burnston.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet.
Are there any questions?
I have a spreadsheet about these. The top 100 foundations in the local public assets. So it's in a spreadsheet that I. Yeah.
So, you know.
Yeah, you're second.
Susan Savage is other daughter. Oh, Burks. Or Lisbon.
Oh, that's Bernstein.
Is it Bernstein?
That one's Bernstein. I did wonder about asking.
I've been talking to her. Because they're, you know, working with her on some stuff with Brookside. And they're into that beautification stuff.
That's it. Okay, I'll talk to her.
And if nothing else, she might have.
She might know who to ask.
Who to ask.
I just kind of feel just like, hey, who wants to throw in?
She, okay, I, I remember now why I'm working with. It's, it's, we're trying to enhance some green spaces.
Re-convince myself. Or their presentations.
In the Brookside area. I hate it though, my face, but she'll say like, this is last chance or whatever that phrase is. And I'm like, oh, I need to unfollow because.
I don't think, no, I don't think so. Exactly. I don't make it.
I was like, oh, no, no, no.
Don't do that.
That's my type of thing.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. He's kind of like that.
I don't like. I'm making straight from this year.
Not them. I, she would be a new one to. She, Lisbon would know probably who. Because some of the other foundations are like, it's got to be all health related work.
Right, that's part of it. Yeah.
We don't have very many. Do you think like this?
Okay, are we ready? What do we need to do to get this back? Nobody's listening. You all, I know you don't know the answer.
He wants to be in attention. I made it about. Same way. They're, they're ready. And we're back. I'm not going to lie, I kind of like just snack and chat. I was expecting to fix.
But makes us less hangry.
Yes. I mean, except for Council Bellas where she was just like, I'm out for pizza theater.
Someone has to let everyone know that.
I don't want you to walk back out.
But look how like, we're a lot more chill when, you know, we can just get a snack.
Yeah, it wasn't hungry until you came in with a pizza.
Next time it'll be buttered popcorn. We do need a popcorn machine up here. Was that be great? Did Krista have one? As usual, and I forgot what time it is. I start texting.
Okay, we're out of recess. Item number four deals with fines and fees. So we have a presentation. The working group is Gilbert, Bingle, Lincoln, and Bush. I'll just tee it off just to remind everybody kind of where we were and how we got here. So this work around fines and fees really did emerge during the Equality Indicators Project. The justice theme. We obviously brought together a team as, after, I should say, we heard from the national experts. Consisting of the courts, the mayor's office, TPD, the Moore Office, Tri-3 Division, DL Restoration Working Group, and many other partners. So we got on our first call. TPD's perspective on really the same issue before us was different than the courts, was different than other parties. As you might imagine, we're trying to solve the same thing, but we're looking at it from different perspectives. We created three overarching goals. The goals are addressing underlying causes of municipal offenses, ensuring every person has an equitable path to compliance. And then customer service. How can we just provide better customer service? Lucked out, we got ARPA funds. Courts made a very good proposal to us to pilot a bunch of initiatives so that we could really test which initiatives worked best and measure their outcomes. And so luckily we had overwhelming support, obviously from the council. And now we need to really share with you some of the outcomes of these projects so that we can determine how we best move forward in continuing to fund those that are producing the best returns. So I think Ashley, you may take it from here and then the group at the far end, who's been working diligently on this for a long, long time, is wanting to provide greater context and then we can go through questions. So it's all yours.
Great, thanks for having me. I'm Ashley here in the Performance and Innovation Manager here with Citi, if you don't know me. I've been working with the municipal court team on evaluating several, several of their programs that were funded with ARPA and CRF dollars. So to give a little preview of our agenda, we're going to talk kind of just at an overview level about this ARPA CRF funding. Then we're going to step into a discussion of program evaluation that we did on three of their seven funded programs. Driver's License Restoration, Court Advocate, and Night Court. Then we're going to talk a little bit about court operations support and then transition to the FY27/28 budget proposal, at which time I'll turn it over to our court team. All right, so just want to highlight here for you the three major categories that were funded by ARPA CRF dollars. So first off, there was technology and facility. This was spent primarily on monitors, signage, audio visual equipment in the courtrooms, et cetera. Then the broad category of programs, you can see the seven programs listed there, and they each had a different runtime. Some were in implementation for one year, some for two years. And all of these programs were really focused on enabling residents to achieve compliance, to access court and social services, and to reduce financial burdens. Then the last piece there is court operations support. So these are staff positions, 13 staff positions to conduct court operations. So now to get into the program evaluation piece of it. So the first program we're going to discuss is the Driver's License Restoration Program. This is where a Service Oklahoma hearing officer is embedded in the courthouse. And of course, Service Oklahoma, previously DPS, previously DMV, the entity that we're talking about. So for each of these program evaluations, we're going to look at three broad categories. Cost, results, and benefits. So to start off with costs, the estimated cost per participant for this program is thirty, about $36 for cost per driver's license reinstated. And right at $13 for cost per visitor. So a couple of things I want to highlight here is that these cost estimates come from information provided by the court management team about the annual costs that it takes to run each of these programs, including court staff time. So then we took that, that estimation of the annual operational costs and multiplied it by the number of years the program was in operation. For this one, it was one year of operation. And the second thing I'll highlight there is for the Service Oklahoma hearing officer, generally folks will, you know, arrive at court to have an arraignment or deal with some court matter, and then they'll go down the hallway and speak to the Service Oklahoma hearing officer. And at that time, they can ask a variety of any questions that they have. They may also be able to get from that hearing officer a list of steps that they need to take to achieve restoration of their driver's license. So that's just a little bit to highlight that distinction between the driver's license that were actually fully restored and then those who came as a visitor, they asked questions. Maybe they got that sheet of action steps they need to take. So the next item here is results. This program ran for one year, August to July 24, 25. And the number of driver's licenses reinstated through this program over that period was 2,249. And the number of folks who came and received information was about 6,300. So moving over to the benefits area, there are three broad constituencies that we're going to talk about for the benefits of these areas programs. First off being program participants, people who actually participate in the program. Next is the city itself, and finally, the broader community. So for this program, participants in the program are able to have prompt access to a Service Oklahoma hearing officer. And there's actually a queue time list we were able to consult with Service Oklahoma. And their East Gate primary location takes about 29 minutes of folks waiting to meet with the hearing officer, whereas at the municipal court, it's two, two nine minutes, so less than 10 minutes. So 24 minute reduction in the wait time. And for folks who come into the court, are able to walk down the hall, meet with this hearing officer, they're saved from making a separate trip over to Service Oklahoma to get this information and figure out what steps they need to take. So for someone who is making minimum wage and has to take a half day off work, maybe a full day, that's an opportunity, opportunity cost of $58 if they have to take the full day off of work. So that could really, you know, be an impact on folks if they have to take that extra time. The next benefit to highlight here is faster resolution. And that faster resolution making it easier to secure a stable livelihood. So the idea here is that you're getting folks to the hearing officer faster. They're getting the information and they can start making progress on that path to restoration more quickly. And there are a lot of jobs out there that require a driver's license. Studies show 30% of jobs are required to have a driver's license. And this stat isn't on there, but 86% of folks in the US are estimated to be driving to work each day, according to census figures. So it's really important. Obviously, we all live in Tulsa. We know the importance of having access to safe and reliable transportation, typically in form of a car, and being able to get that faster resolution to drive legally. And that's very important for most people's livelihoods in the city. Next, for program participants, you have a decreased risk of further penalty and financial burden. So we were able to calculate the decrease in relevant failure to appear warrants. So we looked at that year of program implementation and calculated how many warrants for driver's license suspended and revoked were issued. I compared that to the previous year when there was no program operating. And there was a 3.57% reduction. And that reduction is associated with about $1,100 in staff cost saving. That would be the time that they're spending on doing the administrative work to either issue or recall warrants. And the last item here, it's listed as future evaluation. So we do want to look into whether we're seeing a increase, decrease, or no change in the fees, fines, and costs imposed for folks who are, for the time that this program is in implementation. We didn't have the chance to really dig into that data as we were going through this process, but it is on our list to explore in the future. I think that's something important to really look into. And finally, for the community, the, the primary benefit is having more compliant drivers on the program. That's a benefit to everyone in the community. So the next slide that I'm going to show you is getting into the kind of foundational idea of the program that getting faster, faster resolution for folks with a suspended or revoked license is going to help prevent them from getting into a negative cycle of additional fees, fines, warrants, and potentially even jail. So the Fees and Fines Working Group Action Plan that was developed several years ago kind of demonstrates this cycle. So I just wanted to kind of highlight it for, some of you may have seen it, some of you may not have seen it. So for example, there's a compare and contrast of Person A and Person B. For individual A, if they receive a citation and they have the means to pay a fine upfront in full, their justice involvement ends pretty quickly. They're able to pay that and move on with their lives. However, Person B, if they don't have the means to pay that fine upfront, they may choose to go on a payment plan, which is a great thing, that they have the option to have a bit more time to pay that fine. At the same time, that opens up a bit of a period where they may miss a payment or they may miss a court date. And either of those things could result in additional fines, warrants, or even ultimately jail. So those outcomes are, you get into sort of a negative downward cycle with that that can be hard to extricate yourself from. So the idea being that the quicker you can get folks to, on the path to resolving and actually taking care of that court matter, the less likelihood they have of entering into that negative cycle. Shifting gears a bit, we're going to talk about the Court Advocate Program. This is where a mental health liaison is embedded at the court. So the cost here, estimated cost per participant is $119. And in terms of results, this program ran for two years. And the number of participants seen during that time sits about 1,500. You can see a very large jump from year one with 220 participants in then an increase to about 1,300 in year two. So there was that large jump as the program became more well-known. Judges and other court personnel made more referrals because they became increasingly aware that this resource was available. And in addition, the court advocate began meeting with inmates before their release. The number of resource referrals during that time period is about 1,400. Each individual who comes and meets with the mental health liaison probably is going to have more than one referral. That's why those numbers don't quite line up. 77% of all those referrals were for housing. And we have a few demographic figures here. Those individuals who participated in the program, 79% of them were unhoused. And in terms of kind of racial ethnicity breakdown, it's 57% white, 35% African-American, and 7% American Indian. So shifting over to benefits, for program participants, they have the ability to get resources and referrals onsite and the ability to connect with a case manager for kind of ongoing support. There's also the benefit of crisis stabilization. Folks at the courthouse at times are in a crisis mode, crisis situation that requires some sort of de-escalation and stabilization. And that is a real benefit, that they're able to have a professional there onsite to kind of handle some of that. And then there's of course the benefit of viewing the municipal court not purely as a punitive place, but somewhere that they're able to access resources and get help. So for the city of Tulsa, this, there is a, about 2,000 hours staff saved per year, valued at almost $80,000. And the bulk of that comes from time spent working on, working with folks on de-escalation or researching referral information or putting together resources so that they are available for when folks need them. And that work has primarily, previously to the program, been done by municipal court supervisors. So now they're able to shift their time and attention back to their true job functions. And for the wider community, there is an increased accessibility of resources to individuals who need them at the time that they need them. For our next program, Night Court, Night Court. So this is a Thursday night docket that runs from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM that handles simple traffic cases. So the cost per participant is estimated to be right at $50. And this program also ran for two years. So the number of defendants served in that time was about 4,000, with a pretty big jump from year one to year two. The number of cases heard sits right around 9,500 with, again, a corresponding pretty big jump from year one to year two. And the balance of revenue collected during the night court period was about 215,000, which represents 3% of total revenue collected from, for the courthouse. If we shift over to the benefits for participants, you're seeing improved court access. So these are expanded hours for the, for the dockets where people can come and be arraigned, have, you know, deal with their matters before the judge, as well as the cashier is open during those times. So people have expanded hours for payments. There is also a faster arraignment and add-on process because this docket only handles simple, simple traffic. So folks are being able to kind of move through the docket in a faster manner than at regular court. There's also the element of better customer service. 98% of Night Court participants said they were seeing in a quickly, they were seeing quickly and efficiently, according to a survey administered by the court staff. And we calculated that 41% more warrants were recalled at Night Court than at regular court, which is an interesting element of this program. Then for the city of Tulsa, we calculated that there was a 6.35% better appearance rate at Night Court than at regular court. And for future evaluation, we really want to look into the demographics of folks who are attending Night Court versus regular court. And really look at the question, are we reaching populations at risk of being impacted by warrants? And the Fees and Fines Working Group Action Plan indicated that warrants are significantly impacting minority and female populations more than other populations in our city. So this is something we want to explore further and see really what, what we can find out in that area. And then for the community, there is increased access to court, which is a general benefit in our city. So to shift gears a little bit, those were the three, well, let me wrap this up. For the program evaluation, here we've presented the results of three programs. There were seven programs implemented, and we are intending to go ahead and evaluate the remaining programs prior to the submission of the budget in January. So we are on track to continue these evaluations and have a bit more data about all of the programs. Shifting gears to court operations support. So, so in that three categories, we had the facility technology, we had the programs, and then we had the court operations support. So this is to kind of go into a bit more detail on the court operations support. What was that and why was it needed? So why were ARPA CRF funds needed for staff to conduct court operations? Not exclusively the programs, the seven programs that we were just talking about, but truly the work of the daily work and operations of the court. So the simple answer is an increase in docket size and complexity. So those elements were necessitating, requiring additional staff. So the reasons for that, several of these you have probably heard already. The court team included them in their last budget presentation, but we just kind of wanted to re-highlight them here. That number one, there's been an increased volume from 2018 to 2024. 25% increase in total cases and 50% increase in arrest cases. There's been an increase in the appearance rate, which is a good thing, but it also brings more people in the courtroom. That has to be then staffed appropriately to deal with that volume. And arraignment appearance rates increased from 54% to 63% from the period of 2022 to 2025. The cases heard at the court increased 94%, which to me is a bit of a staggering figure to see. And finally, defendants appearing multiple times for the same case increased by 54% from 18 to 24. And we'll talk in a moment a little bit more about kind of some of the elements that's causing that. The third element here is a decreased clearance rate. In 2011, 85% of cases were closed within a year. By 2025, that dropped down to 69% of cases closed within a year. And some of the, the primary reason that's happening is that judicial discretion is being utilized to give citizens more time to correct their violations. So if someone is not immediately, you know, fined and closed the case, they have the opportunity to pass. They have the opportunity to work on correcting their violations, and that's going to bring them in for a second, potentially a third appearance, and it may stretch longer than one year. So that's definitely one major thing that's going on with that piece. Four, there, the staff levels have been down in the past several years. That said, a couple of positions have been added in the last two years. The court operations supervisor and public defender moving from part-time to full-time are two to highlight there. There have also been, here on five, state law changes that occurred in the middle of the grant term that required additional staff, so no real choice there. This was specifically the cost compliance officer. And finally, for number six, the restorative approach. This is kind of an element of two and three. So this restorative approach that the court has been moving towards allows folks more time to correct their violation. And it's really aiming to increase compliance, decrease financial impact, enable citizens to connect with services when they're needed. So all of these things increase the number of touch points and often the intensity of the interactions. Again, all good things, all things that the city and the mayor, the council, the court staff are the direction that everyone wants to be moving in. And part of using that approach is having more frequent touch points, having folks potentially being in the court more often. All right, that is the end of this portion of the presentation focused on evaluation. So I'm going to turn it over to Grace Follinger, and she is going to look at, oop, the FY27/28 budget request.
Hi, I'm Grace Follinger, Deputy Court Administrator over programs. So if you go ahead and go to the next. Yeah, so this is an overview of our positions that we want to be transitioned over to the general fund. As you can see, the total is $861,091. For the FY27 financial plan, the, one of the judicial clerks was included in that. So if we do get that, then it's going to be the 790,747. So what we did instead of, that's a big chunk of change. So instead of asking it all in one cycle, we did a phased approach. So if you'll go to the next one. This shows our phased approach for the positions. So for the FY27 budget request, we will be requesting a public defender and two judicial clerks. And as highlighted there, one of the judicial clerks is in the FY27 plan. So that would put us at 234,000, almost 235,000. If we need to add in the judicial clerk, then that would put us at 305,000 for the FY27 budget request. Then in the FY28 financial plan, we're going to add four more positions, two municipal clerks and two office admins. One is bilingual in court records and the other ones is in bonds. So that total is going to be 270,455. And we're showing you just to let you know what our three-year plan is, the FY29, where we will add four more positions for a total of 186,584. Now just to note that we predict that we're going to have about $99,000 left in grant funds. So we're going to partially fund those four positions that are listed there, the two cost. two cost compliance and office admin and the community engagement coordinator. So that's why that, that FY29, the ask on the general fund will be a little bit lower because we will still be able to utilize some of those grant funds.
What's the grant? It's ARPA.
CRF.
Okay, CRF.
Yes. Um, on the next one is the programs. This is, are going to be our FY27 budget request for the programs. We will have three months of ARPA left that we can put towards the programs in FY27. So what you're seeing here is a nine-month request, and that comes in at 252, almost 253,000. So we, in the financial plan, we had court services program funding at 227,000. So if we do get that, then we'll just need about 26,000 for the FY27 budget. For the FY28 financial plan, we will need 347,440. This is, um, for those contract employees, and we went ahead and put the 3% increase in there. So, and then I do want to point out, you will see there the financial counseling with the Financial Empowerment Center. I want to point out that that is not coming from the FEC budget. Goodwill is paying that directly to the municipal court for their services. This is just an overview of what we just talked about. So for FY27 budget request, positions would be a total of 305,000. Programs would be a total of about 353,000 for a grand total of 558,000. For the financial plan of 28, we're going to add four more positions for 270,455. And then for the programs, it'll be 347,440. That's a full year, um, on the general fund for the programs for a total of 617 or about 618,000. Then just showing FY29 again, just so you can see our three-year, uh, period, adding four more positions that will be partially funded through grants, about 99,000. And then from the general fund, we'll need about 186,584.
And one cent.
And one cent. Make sure to get that in there.
Okay, thank you all very much. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your, this presentation. I'm not a, this is, you know, I'm a newbie, and so I'm super interested in this working group. I probably know the least about, um, you know, this has been very helpful. My, um, I have a couple of questions. There are four more programs that need to be evaluated. When you talked about the first three, I didn't really get a clear picture of how much each one of the three programs, maybe how the money was allocated as far as they cost, or when you make the budget request, how much of those, these positions reflect each one of the programs? You kind of see how I'm saying? And so I, um, and then also the ARPA funds. Uh, you said that some of, some of the, the positions are covered by the ARPA funds. I'm curious, how much do we have in ARPA and in the, in the chart? I'd be interested to see, um, that in the chart, maybe.
So at our present day, what we have, ARPA has been fully exhausted for position cost. We do have the money there through 940 of 26 for programs through, uh, contracts that we have with outside vendors. But our personnel is all CRF currently. There's a budget amendment in process that might change that, but I'm just talking about what's there today. And then as far as programs, did one of our slides not have the breakdown by program? Does it?
How much it costs?
Yeah, for each. I have it.
So this is for?
Yeah, they don't have that piece though.
Yeah. So for the actual cost of the programs, that's what you're asking per year for like the, for like an FY27? Is that what you're wanting to know?
It's up on the screen.
Yeah, so because it's showing, we're only showing nine months, I can understand. So for the special services court, the full year funding is 79,000. For the court advocate? Oh, sorry, do that. For the FY28, it'll show you the full plus the 3% that I put in for the contract employees. 3% increase.
Our contract employees are the special services court, the court advocate, and the Service Oklahoma liaison.
And the financial counselor.
Okay, which is the 40,200?
For FEC, yeah.
All right, um, I'll, I'll follow up with you a little bit later, but I'm
That's fine.
I'm curious about the, um, you know, seeing the other four evaluations, so.
We'll get you those numbers, so you can.
We're hoping to have them by budget, which is the end of January.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, Council Lakin's been the lead driver on this. Who's on the committee now? I missed that.
Oh, it's on the agenda. I read it too.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Bengal Gilbert in Bush.
Oh, okay. Oh, the, the big agenda, not the laminated one or the, okay, thank you. Sorry. I think we've seen a lot of impacts and it's exciting to see how the vision is coming through. I don't have numbers on the slides. There's the one called Municipal Court Budget Request, and that's the 99 that's still coming from the CRF. Okay, so that's like the final trail out of the CRF funds. Um, on the next one, I just amplify the 40,200 is going to be funded by Goodwill for the FEC. And then on that next slide after that, Municipal Court Budget Request with the three-year plan.
On the, can we go back to that? The FEC, it's not funded through Goodwill? We pay Goodwill.
Okay, but repeat then to me that you said the Financial Counseling Empowerment Center is going to be funded by Goodwill.
Goodwill pays, sorry, I was trying to make sure that you guys didn't think that that money was coming out of the FEC budget. It's a separate, a separate thing.
Separate funding source from the city.
Are we paying Goodwill or is Goodwill paying us?
We're paying Goodwill.
Okay. It's coming from courts, not FECs.
Yeah.
So FEC has like 150,000, this is additive, out of the municipal court budget?
Right.
Okay.
From what we understand, the FEC budget supports only their personnel cost and doesn't include the embedded
Yeah.
person that's in the courthouse.
So this is additional, but it's still city dollars. It's just bifurcated between the Sheridan location and the municipal court. Like, okay, got it. Let me, I was like, not understanding that cost allocation. Okay, and next slide where we're in the three-year kind of table. Next one. Next one, that one. So the overall cost if we do all of this is a 1.36 million over the next three years? Just kind of want to.
Yeah, 1.362, yep.
Yeah, 1.362. And then if y'all look at the fine print at the very bottom, it says does not include any costs associated with the move or a fourth courtroom. So, uh, I wanted to ask, what are these costs and what limitations will we encounter? Should we not do that?
Fourth courtroom. That's something we've been discussing with the mayor's office, with the fourth courtroom. So this, this presentation was strictly ARPA-CRF.
Okay.
But there are impacts, definitely. Um, and we're working on the capacity pieces, trying to reduce the volume in other ways. So I have a little bit of a scratchy throat. Um, to reduce the volumes, and I've been working with Laurel on that. So I don't know how much we want to bring that up here in this forum. I mean, I'm happy to talk about it, but.
We could put a pin in it, but I think we need to think about that. And the reason, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. We continually revise our ordinances and, um, right when law enforcement enforces those ordinances, a lot of those folks end up at the court. And so we are part of that, and I think we're making good choices, but we cannot make those choices and wash our hands of it and not look on the back end of the consequences of when we put more people in front of the court. At some point, they're going to be at max capacity. I know Council Bengals observed a lot of court. I've observed enough to know that they are doing the most with the least in a lot of ways. And they are, our judges are very dedicated, but again, when we talk about working conditions at animal services, I would say we have similar working conditions at our court.
Very substandard.
I'll give you one, uh, just kind of a simple takeaway for me. That's the biggest takeaway on our volume. In 2022, our jail capacity was 32 inmates. Now it's 70, plus we're carrying another 40 at David L. Moss. So we have like 140 inmates at any given time, and we're staffed for 30. And that's a daily grind on a docket. That's a lot. And that's where the fourth courtroom comes in, is having dedicated docket just for that.
Yeah, and I would kind of segue from your com, from what you just said. I'm still challenged by the visual aspect of our jail docket as part of the normal docket of our judges. Our judges do a great job. I think if you haven't gone and sat in each one of those three judges' dockets to kind of really understand what they deal with, they're very fair. They give citizens every opportunity to avoid, um, any kind of infliction to their driving record and, and to get right. And so that's why some of these programs are very significant impacts to our citizens, especially, um, Service Oklahoma, right? That has been a huge impact. And it doesn't cause people to come back and forth, back and forth, and make multiple trips to the court. So the jail docket has really been hard for me to watch. When you have citizens in there, you're in there on your worst day, you're shackled, you're handcuffed. And I don't know exactly what these people are in there for until the judge reads the charges specifically, but that is not a good way for a person to come in front of the public. And I'm still challenged by that visual.
I have, um, one more question. So could you remind us or, um, answer later? We did some revenue recapture adjustments in the last year or two. Could you remind us what those were? It was like?
Is that the technical changes? Is that what that would be?
Yeah, we, like how we.
No, something different.
The collections.
Yeah, collections.
So there was a one, and I have it on the slide, we did very first.
Okay.
There was like an expected one-time like cost bump just from past collections. And then there was an annual cost bump. I bet Sheri, you find out these numbers off the top of your head.
Yeah, I think it was about 500,000.
For one time.
We're getting ready to, to kick that off in the month of November.
Okay.
Uh, we'll have our first round going.
Sure.
And then we're only expecting about 60 to 100,000 annually after that.
Okay, I just, I
It'll definitely be less.
I knew we had looked at it, like revenue side. So yeah, I just did want to highlight that, um, this doesn't anticipate moving out of the facility, right? Because that's on the capital side or the staffing, um, challenges that we're all observing. And, uh, I did just want to remind our newer counselors, um, the way that our municipal court is set up in Tulsa, the administrator reports to the administration, the judges report to us. And so I always feel very strongly as this body that renews their contracts, that we do need to advocate for their working conditions, like they, otherwise they're left, not that Sheri's not, but, you know, we're responsible for them and we're responsible for retaining them and making sure that they're, um, salaried appropriately, which I think we've made big strides on and been very thoughtful about adjusting salary. Um, as Counselor Bengal said, and we all know they're so dedicated. But if you've sat over there on those dockets, the amount of compassion they, they just continually shine out to these citizens who may, this may be their only interaction with the city of Tulsa outside of their water bill and the, the ticket they got from a police officer, right? So, um, but we also have to make sure that they're not being asked to do more with less. And that, to me, outside of new facilities, which we've did the tour and understand, understood very quickly, like that facility is no longer appropriate. It's, it's to me a parallel to what we've been seeing with animal services, and so I just want to make sure that as we're crunching all these numbers that are flying through us in these 25-minute presentations, you know, we take note of the things that we still need to plan for.
Agreed. Definitely, we're going to move on, so, oh, yeah.
Okay, I would be, uh, interested, I'll cut to the short. I would be interested in the median age of the utilizers of these programs, as well as do you have information on zip codes?
We have both of the, we don't have them with us today, but we do have and can get you both of those at that point.
Yeah, I would really like to see that. And also the breakdown of female and male, what the percentage looks like as far as that goes, a lot of the demographic information that you've provided. And that, I think that will show us as counselors where maybe better community programming can occur to break down resources. Yeah, where we can have more resources outside to prevent even that need to come downtown.
One of the things you'll see in our data when we do drill down into zip code data is there are a lot on housed, and so they will report just downtown, just so that you're aware. It kind of skews how it looks because there's not a zip code. It's just whatever the officer puts in the box.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be great to have programming within our own needs to be able to prevent
Upstream.
Yeah, upstream costs that keep increasing.
Yeah, thank you. So I would, I just, this is a little off topic, but I just wanted to take this time to thank, uh, the, the city courts, Sheri and her staff. We just held the seventh Expendment Expo this past Saturday, and the city always supports Judge McHune and Judge Diller Kane and stayed almost the entire time. And they usually do that, so I just wanted to say thank you because that's even over and above what you were doing.
Sheri was there the whole time. Yeah. We worked on it all day, yeah. It was a great, successful event.
Thank you.
Yep, last word for me. Um, I would just say, you know, there's so many qualitative elements to this that we still are trying to evaluate. You know, so the cost for the court advocate is 119 bucks. But the benefits are ability to get resources and referrals onsite, ability to connect case managers, crisis stabilization, so many things. How many of us would put 119 bucks of our own into something with those good outcomes? We probably would do it, although if we had enough hundred-dollar bills in the grand scheme of things. Same thing on driver's license restoration. It's just highly beneficial to get that driver's license restored at the, at, at the point of contact. So they don't have to drive to East Tulsa.
With no license.
Tulsa's a bad place to have you drive.
But no license to get there.
Get it right there, don't run the risk of not doing that, getting pulled over, having an issue that puts you in, in jail or costs you a lot more. So there's just so much value to continuing to invest in this. I can't thank you all enough. You've been telling us for a very, very long time. Thankfully, we did have the ARPA and CRF funds to invest in this to make most of it come true. Now we just have to work within the process to continue to make it happen. Okay, we're off to agenda item number five, the Pre-Hospital Working Group, and I'll get it off to whoever's leading us.
I am taking this one. Um, thank you so much. Just to level set, Pre-Hospital Community Healthcare Working Group, uh, started in February of 2023, and it was, um, Councilors Hall Harper, Q, Bengal, and myself that started that. Obviously, Counselor Q retired last year, and so we've added Counselor Gilbert to the ongoing work. Um, from February of 2023 through February of 2024, we were meeting weekly as a body and then transitioned into more of a monthly interval. And now have stayed on a monthly interval with a little hiatus over the summer because we were in the RFP process. Um, just to remind those of you who are here and those who are new, immediately in fiscal year 24 budget, we knew we needed to make some in, investments. And so at that time, we did a $350,000 increase on, um, fire paramedic supplies so that when they're arriving on scene to augment what Ems is doing, they have the supplies necessary that had not been increased in like 15 years. And then we got a, um, one-time $150,000 allocation to hire a consultant to help us do a citizen-focused analysis of the customer experience, um, of the pre-hospital healthcare system in Tulsa. And for us, that's really from the time somebody says, I need to call 911 and places the call to whatever resulting, uh, outcome, whether it's they get a first response, an alternative response, or they say, I'm good, I'll go to urgent care, or, you know, just, you know, refuse service altogether. Um, in 2023, the working group, uh, went to San Antonio to observe their prehospital community healthcare system and their mobile integrated health system, and came back with some really best practices and strong recommendations. Um, that led to us having a pretty robust discussion about what does nine-one-one look like today? And what could it maybe look in, like in the future in terms of positioning the fire department to be supervising, training, and having direct oversight to their own dispatch? That continues to be an ongoing discussion, but out of that, in the fiscal year twenty-five, we did secure two positions to, um, help fire dispatch start to strive to meet those national standards. Um, initially, I think both those positions are gonna be fire-focused, as I understand it now. One is fire-focused, one is more of a hybrid police-fire, um, position that Chief Baker and Deputy Chief Brooks worked through. Um, those positions were funded in fiscal twenty-five, they still have not been hired, but I got an update that fire supervisor position is in the process of getting the job description written. And the physician will report directly to Chief Baker, so that is a change. Right now, none of the dispatchers report to Chief Baker. And then the CAD's administrator job, which is that hybrid job between police and fire, uh, was just reclassified this past week from AT thirty-two to AT forty, and will be posted soon. Um, and that Chief Baker and, uh, Deputy Chief Brooks are working through the administrative, um, details of how these positions will work. So just for our, um, counselors who haven't been as in the weeds, right now our Tulsa Fire Department is dispatched at Tulsa nine-one-one, which is under the administration of the Tulsa Police Department. Our working group, um, I think wanted to look at these two positions so that we can strive to get Tulsa to meet the National Fire Protection Association's standards and practices, specifically one-two-two-one and one-two-two-five. So when we go back to the red dot on national, um, standards to be, you know, America's safest, safest city, I'm just gonna put a pin in like NFPA is probably something that we should put as a criteria. Um, on the request for proposals on the consultant, the contract was negotiated, um, over the summer, Counselor Bangle and I were on that review committee along with Commissioner Roberts, Jonna Aisley, the CEO of Emsa, Chief Baker with the Fire Department, and Deputy Chief Brooks. We had several applicants and went through a robust scoring process and narrowed it down, and so the contract's been offered to, um, Public Consulting Group, and that was just sent to them for final signatures on the twenty-first of October. Um, we have requested that they be onsite, their initial proposal was going to be all virtual, and Counselor Bangle and I felt strongly that there needs, if we're really understanding the customer, customers' experience, that we need to have them engaging with the customers. I think there will be an opportunity for counselors to also help facilitate some of the constituent informing and gathering and, you know, getting feedback. Um, we wanna move past anecdotes and really drill into like data so that we can analyze where the gaps are or where we just need to strive. Um, Ashley Murphy will be serving as the project manager, so that's kinda like launching us into now, um, the, uh, presentation here. You saw, I just talked about the, I, I wasn't watching the slides go, I was just talking, okay.
You breezed through that pretty quick without any prompting.
Uh, yeah.
You didn't need it.
You didn't need slide, you did it.
I did it. The public consulting group, remind me where they're based, is it?
Austin.
Austin, Texas, and they've done work in the city of Tulsa and Tulsa County. I'm looking at Commissioner Roberts, cause she'll remember, we, I don't remember how many applicants we had, maybe-
It was like eleven.
We had ten, he had one withdrawn.
Yeah, so we had a lot of choice, and there were a lot of, um, this is a two-phased approach that the, um, working group has put forward, and so this would just be phase one, so it's not the full one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll have dollars left over for phase two. Um, I know the wheels of government turn slow, and I'm, this is my opinion. Getting funding approved, and two years later, we're still writing job descriptions. I don't know what the holdup is, I know we've had issues in the past with other things.
How feet dragging.
Well, is, is it an HR, like, I don't know what it is, but I'm just going to express that when we work that hard to scrimp and scrape and scrape and negotiate down to seventy thousand dollars for an X-ray machine in the same year we're asking for a hundred and fifty for an RFP.
Yeah.
And that took as long as it did, and I understand there's administration changes and things. Um, I, I want to thank Commissioner Roberts for jumping in and leading on that side because she really had to pick up and understand what we've been talking about and, and get in. So since she's come on, we've seen an acceleration and, you know, checking some boxes, so I did wanna say that. But it should not take us two years, and you all know, and I'm, we don't need to get in here, but our fired fighters have been very public about what they want to see changed. And so when we talk about a sense of urgency and looking at how we're gonna be the safest city in America, we have got to have these conversations. Um, so I think I covered everything on the slide deck, and I just wanted to say that we will continue to meet. Um, we've been very focused on, on these elements of the prehospital community healthcare system, but there's a lot more there. Um, and so now that we've kind of got progress on the things that have been in the pipeline, we're regrouping, obviously the consultants will be here and, and we'll see what their reporting and their research tell us, and then that should inform some of these priorities we continue to set.
Bellis and then Bush, thank you.
Yep.
Two follow-up questions or like putting pins in budget elements. I know we've talked about Good Sam or something similar in the past as far as technology goes, right? The, like, related part of the challenge of, like, the prehospital space has to do with integration across these departments, with our public health infrastructure, with like dispatch times and things like that, where we know these like minutes, seconds make a huge difference in outcomes, um, and that there's been that technology discussed in the past, right? Which Good Sam's a quick summary is like, someone calls nine-one-one, if their phone's able to do it, like, they get some link, they can click, video comes up so that the person can help see.
Oklahoma City Fire Department's been using it for a year quite successfully.
That's, yeah, that's awesome. Well, the, the concept is also it can help make sure someone's assessing a situation, providing that person support in like taking some type of action, or also assessing if we don't need to dispatch certain vehicles. Like, there's a lot of life and cost-saving that can happen, so I really hope that that can be something that's pursued, like, or made space for in the upcoming budget. Um, especially given, like, pre- or like, those RFP processes happened, now they're assessing. By the time we get, like, reporting outcomes, who knows what budget cycle we're looking at? If we are thinking through, okay, what are the quality improvement measures for nine-one-one? And we know that people's, as the Fire Department's been clear, people's lives rely on us improving how some of this plays out. So maybe that's something that's like a mitigating technology that could happen sooner potentially. Um, and then my other-
Just to be clear, the technology can't happen without a change in the staffing pattern and just like the operations.
Okay, that's-
And it's, it's above my pay grade to figure out what that is, I just know when we were in San Antonio, and now we can look right at Oklahoma City, which I do wanna say was not first in line to talk about this, but they're now gonna show us how it can be done, which is another point of frustration for some of us.
Uh, yeah, I would love to per, like, whatever we can do as a body to support continuing to pursue that kind of both like life and cost-saving measure, um, especially since it's like a technology that's not incredibly expensive and it's like an upfront and then like licensing fee. And then the other, my other curiosity, or I, like, this is something I know in some ways less about, but I know the Fire Department has the ju- lot of system, and then that's like, there's that kind of case management referral aspect where they're able to then send that in to family children's. It could go into like a hospital ER setting for some of these frequent flyers. Um, especially like the people that are kind of case managing. Does that tie in with like, cause I don't think the police have a similar case management software? I just, like, I've been really curious about the data sharing ability between departments related to that or the case, that case management aspect, and like our ability to kind of track, like, the Fire Department, maybe these hospital, family, childrens all knows when they've interacted with the ex-person, if the police department are interacting with the same person, or they, do they know?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, cause I know that's also one of those, like, it's streamlining, it might help us-
Efficient.
Be more efficient in that prehospital response. Is, that's a curiosity, or, or if that is a tech budgetary need to like, make sure that we have that software available elsewhere.
So I'll, I'll answer your first que- question first.
Yeah.
Um, we do have software that's similar to Good Sam, we're operating with Prepared nine-one-one right now. Um, the Fire Department did put a request in last year for Good Sam during the budget cycle. We did not approve that because of the Prepared. At that point, there was not, um, a clear delineation as to what benefit one had over the other. One is far costlier than the other, um, and just as of, um, so we have taken some steps with the Fire Department, we've had part-time personnel, actually we had somebody over there on a temporary basis for about three months, uh, with the Fire Department to do a very deep dive into it, give us some recommendations on it. We've revisited some of those and just recently have started to pick up the ball again on, on the positions and whatnot. And the Good Sam conversation is part of this, what does Good Sam deliver at a much more cost benefit? Um, a ca- uh, co- compared to Prepared nine-one-one. So I would expect to see some of those conversations around budget cycle as to, to what each one of those software. But we do have the capability to drop a pin to a caller or drop a link to a caller, live stream that into dispatch. Um, and so, uh, we're, we're working through those changes, but we, we have noticed the success of Good Sam. And Chief Baker is a huge proponent of it, um, and so I think we're, we will revisit those conversations and see what the best option is in our next budget cycle.
That's exciting.
Gelada, um, I don't really see how that, um, other than the very specialty mental health units within the police department, how gelada would really be helpful just to your average patrol officer responding.
But is that something that the mental health units and TPV already have access to?
I don't know that question, I can find out the answer to that.
I just think that could be, I've just been thinking about, we know that sometimes it's like one hundred people that, whether it's police, fire, et cetera, are constantly, yeah, there's those high utilizers who are in and out of, like, they're getting out of the ER and they're circling back around, and so that integration with family, children's, the ability to send those referrals to the hospital systems, I would just be curious if those same mental health folks have access to that or how that's integrated across police and fire, knowing fire has that tool.
So the CIT response or the CRT response is embedded with a firefighter paramedic?
Right.
Who does have that capability, so there's a-
There's a-
Partner on board that has that.
Okay.
So if there's not the access twenty-four seven for that.
Do the people who are the, um, social, last question, the social work folks that are embedded in the different, like, divisions right now also have that access?
Uh, IRT. IRT?
Yeah.
I don't know that.
That's just an interest, yeah, just as a curiosity.
And even as we're dealing with the homelessness issue, I've asked that same question. When we're talking about case management and keeping people out of that perpetual cycle of homelessness, that those service providers have access to that, and that it's a shared database. So that you can do good case management, to your point.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, big curiosity. And efficiency.
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Bush, and then we'll go to break.
Um, eh, real quick, and then, probably for you, what's the new timeline? I mean, you've been at this, we're going on three years. Ca- how do we accelerate this and get, let's get this going? What's your timeline?
My timeline was two years ago, thank you, I got the dollars, we got it down, and here we are.
I, I think now that we have a contract signed and a project manager, I, I would not anticipate much between now and the holidays. Um, so m- my goal is to get that started right after the first of the year. PCG, um, was a four-to-five month timeline to do their-
Once they start.
Once they start.
Yeah, so we should have some results by-
Summer. Coming into the end of the budget.
Yeah, well, that's what my question, are we coming, I mean, we do budget in June, so are we gonna have any information?
I would anticipate yes.
Early indicators. I, I will just say this, there are certain things that a consultant will tell us about ourselves that we don't know, but I think the vast majority, at least from the working group, we know.
We know, right.
And we should listen to the people closest to the problem who's been repeatedly telling us what needs to change. So it's just gonna take, right, we're having conversations about how do we get all of our needs met with the dollars we have today? Maybe dollars down in the future, but I think when we go back to priority setting, that red dot on meeting national standards really stands out to me, and I will just say around this, we know what the standard is, we're making steps there.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we also need to invest where it needs to be invested. And I think, you know, over the years, we've had grant dollars and things fund stuff that, um, we can pilot. We certainly approved that out with alternative response and CRT and-
Sure.
So I just, we need to stay on it, and I, I, I am grateful to this working group. I know we've kinda had real intense times of being together every week and then it would kind of not, but, um, we'll get back at it now that we actually know that we're gonna have a four-to-five month project coming through, so. And, um, Commissioner Roberts is on our working group too, sorry, I did not say that before, so she-
She has nothing else to do.
Well, when we launched, we didn't have a commissioner, now we do, so.
It's great.
It's been very helpful.
And I wanna add one more win that we got out of this.
Oh, yes.
And it was really low, cause when you talked about the, the funding of supplies, we also had the, the vendor supply issue.
Yes, that's right, thank you.
Uh, Emsa was able to get required equipment at one cost, and then T- Tulsa Fire would be left out there to negotiate their own cost, and it would be somewhat higher.
Three times higher.
Yeah, than what Emsa was paying, and so we fixed that issue, uh, with Donnie Teeman, who's the director of-
Purchasing.
What is he, what is he, acquisitions or whatever, purchasing, thank you. And so that issue has now been fixed, so both, uh, entities that are required to have that equipment mandated by the O M D will now get that same vendor pricing, so that was a huge win. Yeah, thankfully, we tried a couple of times beforehand and it just didn't work, but now it's over the line and, yeah, saving money is critical. Exactly. Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be back whenever you want us five minutes in.[364.41]
To do a lot of that work and we'll continue to kind of do that throughout until we get things right. And this is, I mean, this is a process that we learn something, we, we make a change, we do something a little bit better, or we find something different. I mean, it's, it's going to take time and we're going to continue to put our best foot forward. Housing Acceleration Team's a good example of that. So this is kind of a new program developed under Mayor Nichols and Gene and I and working with Michael and the many others who are involved in that. So as a, again, focused on housing development project, we meet every day, we sit down, we talk about the issues, we figure it out, we communicate in person around a table just like this on the other side of the wall. And we did that with the Hilltop Project. And our goal for that, and I think what we learned is it was very much like, how can we get permits issued, building permits issued within 30 days? What we're finding is not every project is maybe that timeframe, you know, maybe there's projects that, in fact, with this one, we probably got a little bit ahead of the developer and what they necessarily needed, which is great. But those are conversations that I think Gene and I have several throughout the week talking about projects. Counselor Bush, we've visited with Tim Yardi and the Moxie and we just had a conversation with him earlier this week. So we're open to having those conversations with anybody who's looking to do, you know, larger developments within Tulsa and we know that there's going to be a planning and a zoning or an infrastructure or we're going to help them figure that out. So that's been really beneficial, I think, again, for us to kind of take a peek under the hood and kind of go through that. We're successful, you know, in our first attempt getting permits issued within that 30-day timeframe. Every project's different and that's kind of the point of that, that team. So that's an internal team where we really kind of roll our sleeves up and get to work. And then Sarah touched on the Development Process Improvement Initiative, but that's been really more focused on hearing from external stakeholders at a high level. We may not get into all the nuanced detail weeds of every single project, but hearing from folks in the development community, allowing them, I think, is always kind of an open format for them to tell us what's going on, what they're experiencing, so.
So in that initiative, and Counselor Bush and Counselor Lakin were present in that, several of us sat, I think it was all day, on a day in July, through four sessions.
July.
It was on July 9th. On, through four sessions with various individuals. Some were connected with HBA, others had directly reached out. Travis, I think even when the permanent system and found people currently in the system to reach out to, we wanted to talk to people across the spectrum who were involved in this based on their professions. So people who are developers may have very different experience than people who are builders versus architects. And it, and it really helped us see the, the wide array of those things. Through that process, there were some themes. They also complimented though staff on things that they had done over the last several years and some technology upgrades that they had found were helpful. Comments on those were just, you know, minor improvements on those as well. So the themes that were developed were culture and customer service, inspections that really related towards consistency. Often in a large organization, you know, one person looks at something different than another person, but we want to have consistency for our customers. Infrastructure resources isn't just physical infrastructure resources, but this is maybe more of on the public work side, just better information about what the current infrastructure is and available. The development and application of codes. You all know, we've learned a lot about an organization called the OUBCC in the last few years and how those processes are adopted at the state and then how that impacts here. There's a lot of recommendation that we need to be further involved in that. And some of these things we, we go and check on. So, and Gene will tell you a little bit more about this, but we've got, we do have representation on technical committees and OUBCC. So sometimes it's just communicating those things with the public. Reevaluating some regulatory requirements, that again is with OUBCC, but also is maybe a role at this table depending on what the regulatory requirements are. And then a lot of workflow, work process and end of process surprises. This, this had a lot to do with maybe not so much what the regulation was, but just the communication about it upfront, going, you know, again, big organizations, so silos. And so how can people know about all of the processes upfront? Heard a lot about sidewalks and a lot about driveways, which.
I can understand why that would have come from the professionals.
Yeah. So, and, and I, that was, that was actually pretty across, if I was to say one regulation, that was pretty across the board. And so that, under all of those themes, they had several suggested action steps. A lot of those action steps aligned with some action steps we're seeing out of the other work. We've gone ahead and taken a few and Gene's going to go over those with you.
Cool. Yeah, thank you all. So yeah, we have on this slide kind of 10 initial steps that we've either have taken or in the process of taking some before that July 9th meeting or whenever that day was. And in addition to those 21 folks who came in all day, all day on that day, I've been out in the field and listening to people almost on a daily basis, hearing both comments, compliments and criticisms or suggestions. So I just want to make that clear that not everybody is upset. There are some people who say great things. And also it is partly, in my opinion, is perception of development services gets a bad rap because people think, oh, permit process. But as Sarah indicated, sometimes that includes, you know, how long it takes an individual architect to do something or an engineer to respond to comments from development services or inspections or planning. And so a lot of people just lump that together and say, oh, it took me nine months to get a permit, when really it took three weeks to get the permit from when they submitted it, but it took them three months for the architect, you know, their private architect to draw plans and it took them three months to go through a zoning process. So just want to kind of put that in perspective, that development services often kind of takes it on the chin for a lot of other things. So with that, kind of go through some of these at that day, all the developers were there. I think it was Counselor Lakin who suggested to them that we as a city or Counselor Lakin and Bush would come up with kind of a quarterly progress report to keep those who came and spent their time and energy giving us feedback, quarterly progress report of here's what we've been doing or are doing in the process. So we're working on that. I think we're slightly past that quarter deadline, but we are working on that. If we had nothing else to do, we would have done that a lot quicker. There are a few other things going on around here. So we are working with getting that update so that you counselors can send something out, kind of a version of what we're going through today.
Great.
You're welcome. The Housing Acceleration Team Travis sort of mentioned, but in addition to kind of prioritizing specific developments and we are kind of exploring other second developments to look at, but a big part of that to me is kind of takeaway. So after we issued those permits for the Tulsa Housing Authority's Hilltop Project, which by the way is six buildings, 107 units, and we issued those permits in 30 days, which is pretty remarkable, I think. But we then kind of did a debrief both with the internal team that spent those daily meetings and with the Tulsa Housing Authority to kind of take lessons, learn from that as to if and when we do a second project, what we learned, and so we do that better and also things that we can take away from that process that we can apply kind of more globally to all permits. So to me, one of those kind of to the sidewalk and driveway concept, one of the big takeaways to me was during the Housing Acceleration Team daily meetings, develop individuals in the room would often say, well, this isn't going to hold up issuing the building permit, but at some point they're going to need XYZ permit. And so I thought that was really important that, A, we discovered that, I'm not sure how clearly we are communicating that to applicants. And so that's one of the things we're figuring out. I'm a big fan of clear, consistent communication. If you say something 20 times, people are a lot more likely to act upon it than if you say it once. And so we are trying to figure out ways that we can be more clear upfront that when we issue a permit, here's your building permit, here are the 10 other permits or approvals that you're going to need, here's roughly how long they take, so that the developer can then kind of put that into their planning schedule. So that to me is a really important takeaway from the Housing Acceleration Team. Housing Forward was mentioned earlier that they are a great resource in addition to the advocacy policy work they're doing. We have a, they agreed to donate some of their time, I think Council approved a donation services agreement from them a few months ago, and that's kind of more towards the communication. I think as Sarah mentioned, Development Services has been doing a lot of work. We have the S.Smart Court America recommendations kind of issued early this year and just in the regular course of business, Development Services is constantly looking at processes and improvements that they can make and making them. I think we as a city haven't been as good as we could be about communicating that. So to Counselor Bush's point earlier, I think some developers have a perception or had a bad experience, it might have been a couple of years ago, but they don't know that we've changed. And so they're often saying, oh, I had a bad experience in Tulsa X number of months or years ago, I'm not working there anymore, they're too hard to deal with. So part of what the Housing Forward has agreed to do is kind of help us get the word out. Because it's one thing if we say it, it's another thing if Housing Forward, who hopefully is an independent third party, has a better reputation, has a different reputation, and they can help us spread the word of the improvements that we have made and are in the process of making. So I'm really excited about that. The pre-development meetings, as you probably all know, kind of bigger development before they submit their building permits, they typically have a pre-development meeting where all the different departments come and provide feedback. We've talked about some ways that we can kind of streamline those processes. So for example, typically that it is left to the development team to kind of take notes on those meetings leading, it might be more helpful if somebody from city staff takes notes. And that way we can kind of have a consistent format that those notes take and we can make sure that those notes are what we actually said during those meetings and what our expectations are. So we're working on some improvements to that process, which again will make the whole, from that date to the actual submission of permits and the review process a lot smoother and more consistent. I just recently learned what the OUBCC is, the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, quite a mouthful, but as Sarah indicated, right, we have this, had City Legal Department look into that, we do have representation from city staff on that, and so we are involved in that. And there's also kind of a state advocacy, as mentioned, Housing Forward has been doing a lot of work, they made recommendations, they went up to Oklahoma City earlier this summer and made some recommendations. Based on those recommendations, the OUBCC created a whole new committee to kind of explore simplifying requirements. So for kind of the missing middle three to eight unit buildings, kind of simplifying some requirements. For example, there's two different codes, there's the International Building Code that is triggered at I think four or more units, that also applies to like airports and manufacturing facilities, and then the residential code, which is like three or fewer units. So looking, and then like where, when fire suppression is required. So this new committee is looking at those issues that would make recommendations to the full committee, the commission, sorry, which then might make changes at the state level, which we could then adopt. So, and obviously we're, we're trying to balance, we're not interested in compromising safety, we're not saying we should never have fire suppression, we're just trying to figure out what the best balance is as to when that should be triggered because obviously there's a cost with imposing that. So we're trying to be comprehensive and realistic about changes that are made. Legal analysis of city code, there are some conversations at that day that developer said, well, even if the state code says this, the city can make changes and we can do different things. And so we had City Legal look at that, and that's not actually correct. We cannot be more lenient than the state code. There are some possibilities that we may have some flexibility around interpretation. And so we are again looking at that and trying to figure out what sort of interpretation we can make, but obviously we need to be consistent and again communicate that clearly. So that's an ongoing process that we are exploring. Fast track permits, you probably all know, I think you had to act on this, but in July the city reinstated a fast track permit process, which had been going on in years past, I think fell off during COVID, but we've reinstated it and this is a program for interior residential remodels that permits can be issued in one day. So that's kind of a step in the right direction, a small task because we don't want to say all permits can be issued in a day and not be able to meet demand. So we have had a number of those permits issued. We are kind of continuing to review that process and see is it, is it working great? Should anything need to be, anything that needs to be tweaked or adjusted or if and how we can expand that. So again, we're, we're trying things on small scales to make sure that we can do it right and then figuring out ways to do more. Exploring software efficiencies, we've met with some service providers to explore different options, but obviously that requires funding and time to implement and changes, so not necessarily the best idea, but we're at the same time looking at ways that we can use the existing software that we have more efficiently. And so we just had a meeting last week with half a dozen different departments on making sure that they are all using the same software. Except for there's some, some reviews that for either sidewalks or driveways or easements that each department has to look at it and the second department can't look at it until the first department does. And they either walk it from one department to another or send an email and we're trying to figure out ways that maybe we can have more departments look at it at one time and/or be in the same system so that apartment two can see in the system, oh, department one approved it, now it's my turn instead of having to wait for that email or, or a physical walk.
Is that the Taylor system?
It's EnterGov, which I think used to be, yeah.
Todd.
I think Tyler's the company, EnterGov is the system, if I'm close to correct. Also kind of back to one of the Housing Forward communication concepts, as we're working with Housing Forward, they are kind of sitting down with, with the Development Services Department to figure out what our processes are and what software systems we use. One of the benefits that we've identified or one of the issues we've identified is right now when, when a developer submits an application, say for a single-family home, they submit a permit, the developer can choose to be the contact person. And so they are the ones who get notified when Development Services does their review and issues comments. We're talking about for, again, on, on a pilot basis, trying to make sure that the owner of the property is also included as a contact. The developer can issue, can decide how many contacts are issued, they can put in their developer and the builder and the contractor and the fire suppression, or they could just do themselves. And I think for simplicity's sake, oftentimes they just do themselves, which means that when they get the comments, it's up to them to update their client as to what happened. And so to kind of my earlier point, I think there's this perception of, oh, I submitted it to the city and the city took X number of months to review it, which may not always be 100% accurate. Sometimes the city responds very quickly and it's that developer or contractor or builder who may not get to it or may not update their client very immediately. So we are exploring the ways of making sure that the owner is included as a contact or as it requires, so that they get noticed at the same time as their builder or developer. Because I know we just built our house and if we got notices from the city, I would be on my contractor to respond to them quickly. So that's just another kind of takeaway from one of the things that we're already doing. Last two things and then I'll shut up. Sidewalk driveway process, the planning department is doing a survey, they've reached out to 60 cities looking at policies related to sidewalks, when sidewalks are required, when developers can choose to pay a fee in lieu, cost sharing programs, things like that. So far 20 cities have responded. And so the planning department is still kind of working on getting more follow-up and kind of evaluating that data. We'll come up with some suggestions or best practices that we'll make recommendations. So again, more to come. And then lastly, number 10, sidewalk, sidewalk driveway process. Sorry, I might have gotten mixed up backwards somewhere here, but as I mentioned, that was kind of one of the permits that we've talked about through the Housing Acceleration Team. That is typically an issue that's raised towards the end, but if we can identify it upfront and say, hey, you're going to need this sidewalk driveway permit, when you get your permit, it typically takes 60 to 90 days, you developer plan accordingly. I think that'll make that kind of avoid some of these last minute surprises that we, we've heard about. So in summary, there are a lot of good conversations going on, a lot of work being done, staff is doing some amazing things and we're continuing to evolve. It's not just kind of a one and done thing, but we are constantly going through the process and I'm looking forward to the momentum continuing as we continue to make process. Happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Do you have a question?
I do.
You had the floor to begin, but you can jump right back in there.
Oh, well, I'm used to getting in queues.
We're very casual.
Well, I'm in queue.
I know the other CP is in queue.
I know there's been a lot going on, but I have had some of those developers ask about the corridor, our first report, can you give me an idea of when that's going to be available?
In the next few weeks.
So before Christmas?
Yes, absolutely before Christmas, hopefully before Thanksgiving.
Before Thanksgiving, yeah.
We are working on a draft to get to you all for input and feedback this end.
We will be even more thankful, yes.
Yes, we'll celebrate.
All right, CP two?
Okay. So if I steer the car into incoming, incoming traffic, steer me back the other way. So I have, go back a slide if you would real quick. So I had some questions. One of the things that I was kind of, kind of interested in when we were in Salt Lake City and some other, of the other cities that I've seen, why do we not impose an impact fee as part of developments? Has that ever been discussed?
I don't know the answer to that. It hasn't been discussed in my 10 months here.
Because I consider sidewalks and driveways as part of infrastructure, right? And as we have these conversations about infrastructure, these developments, some of them are hyper-scaled. When you have RS5s, a RS5 and you have lack of infrastructure and you have fewer opportunities to advocate for capital improvement funds, why aren't we imposing or considering the impact fees as part of developments? And then let me add to that question by, with a second piece. I've heard rumor that folks who do development locally, when they're complaining about this process, their plans aren't fully mature, or their designs and things that come to the table. So the folks, this is just rumor, so I'm not pointing who I, I'm not going to name who I heard it from.
I'd be glad to.
But what I've heard is that local developers are really the cause of their own pain, pain points with the city of Tulsa. Anyone outside of the city of Tulsa who does business with the city of Tulsa through this same process doesn't have these pinch points. So.
That's pretty general.
Answer that, answer to that rumor if you've heard that.
I'll, I'll try to answer both those questions and then others can fill in. But I think on the first question, again, I'm not aware of it, something we can look into, I think sidewalks as part of that policy recommendation, that may be something that comes up, but it's also kind of a two-sided coin of, you know, we hear development is difficult in Tulsa and so adding impact fees obviously adds to costs. And so yes, that is a way of funding things, but on the flip side of that, that's going to then make that house more expensive if the developers, because developers are not just going to pay an impact fee out of their pocket, they're going to add that to the price. So it is something we will look at and I, I will get back to you all with some more information. I checked here at the table, nobody has a lot of field information about that, but we can look into.
Yeah, certainly the pros and cons.
Whether that's a possibility.
Absolutely.
I'll just add, it has been discussed, I just, the two of us and others, they just haven't been in the room in those conversations. I mean, it's, Oklahoma City has impact fees, my understanding. So it's, it's been discussed, but we'll have to, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like some exploration of that publicly, right? Because that's always a concern when you do hyperscale developments is having the most developable space in the city, I constantly have high-density development requests come and there's not infrastructure to support that. Even Counselor Dr. Wright and I, in understanding what development is coming, we planned ahead for a specific corridor. So if the next bite, these folks are going to have to live for a decade with that development until we can get to the next iteration of capital improvement and fight for the construction funding. And so that's kind of the challenge and I've seen where cities have been able to create sustainable growth by charging those impact fees. Yeah, I know it's going to be a cost to the developer, it's going to be a cost on the front end, but at the same time, they're the beneficiaries of that infrastructure improvement. So just want to explore that.
It also affects infill, by the way.
Yeah.
Like D9 is all infill. So when you take away a little bungalow that's tying into a one-inch with a McMansion that needs a six-inch, I mean, it causes problems, which is why D9 is also completely underwater.
And so going to number seven on your list here.
Sorry, can I answer your second question first?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you.
I want to hear a rumor.
Yeah. I have heard similar rumors.
I almost forgot about my rumor.
Yeah, that's okay. I've heard similar rumors and I think there is, there is some truth to it. Again, I don't, I don't want to generalize and throw, you know, 100 developers in, in one bucket, but I have also heard similar rumors both externally and internally. And there is, I will say there, I think there is some truth to that. I think some developers, kind of again to my initial point, there is some perception of, oh, I'm just going to submit it to the city, that way I can tell my client that I've submitted it and then, you know, blame the city when it takes them two weeks to get back to, to me and, and the response is, you have not, you know, and so we're talking about, again, communicating that and also like whether we should reject it if there isn't some level of completion, right? Just reject it, you have not submitted complete plans, we're not, because it takes time, right? And so we are trying to be customer service oriented, but you know, we shouldn't be doing the professional consultant's jobs for them either. So it is an issue that has come up, we are having conversations about it. We are also, yeah.
Yeah, because we did hear from some of those that were at the table, that some contractors, they just let the city of Tulsa do the work.
Yeah, this was kind of the.
So they, they did a pencil sketch and that's.
This was kind of what we had with the fire marshals.
Right. And so we even talked about a school of some sort or a training. It's like you can't submit something until you go through our training on what it is. I mean, we've, we kicked around a bunch of ideas that day.
Yeah. So we're still exploring those options, we're still exploring ideas of, you know, the, the, the scale of that problem and ways to address it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this even, when the fire marshals were here, I think it was last year, and they were talking about the submission of fire suppression plans and they were actually having to tell them and design the plans for them. And so I want to make sure that people really understand the message about doing business with the city and is that the truth and not necessarily the false claims and perceptions that are, that are communicated.
Can I just add a little flavor to that, Counselor?
So part of, you know, this, it's harder to do development or, you know, for out of state
is easier, local, kind of what you're saying. Conversations that I've had, some of that's because the work that a lot of these larger groups do nationally, they're dealing with much large, you know, restrictive regulatory requirements. If you think about like coastal cities and things that they've got to deal with, environmentals and different, like, we don't do, we don't require that, we don't have you submit permits or reviews or et cetera. And so I think for some people, that's why they come to Tulsa and it's like, you just need these XYZ things, that's great, I don't have to go through all these other reviews and permits, man, this is the best place to come and do business.
Right.
Because it's a lot easier than some of the things they have to deal with in other cities from that perspective.
But I personally, if that's your profession, if you're a developer and a builder, you need to adhere to the standards.
Yeah.
You should know what you're, what's expected of you. If this isn't your first bite at the apple, you should already know what's expected of you.
Real quick, if I could add one more thing, we are also kind of exploring ways to kind of share data about our average processing review time. So, you know, how long it takes Development Services to respond once they get something.
Right.
And then the flip side of that is then how long they're waiting, we are waiting. So we review something, typically I think Michael Craig McGraw, on an average of 10 days we're responding, but it then, may then take architect, engineer, builder, three months to get around to it and provide feedback.
Right.
But then they add that to the whole process and so then the, the con, the rumor or the, the conversation is, oh, it took four, you know, four months. Well, we can't control how quickly people respond to us, but again, we're taking the blame for that time. So we're, we're trying to use data to tell our story and figure out ways of kind of incorporating some of that information, maybe on our unit tracker or things like that where we track, just trying to be transparent and accountable, but also dispel some rumors.
Oh yeah. So going back to number seven, right on your fast track permit, so smaller developers where they've done, I'm not going to throw a name because I don't know a lot of different developers, so two that I do know, Casey Robinson and Mark Ruiz, who do smaller type developments, right, in alternative housing solutions of duplexes and things of that nature. Where we have good vetted small developers, do we give them some sort of concierge-type service to get them through the process quicker so that they can get housing or rehabilitation of structures faster?
Yes. We have implemented a community builder program, which is a pilot, which is exactly that. So for a few small developers who have multiple properties, yes, they have a concierge. Jesse Morrow is their one point of call. He gave them their first, his personal cell phone in a kickoff meeting we had and both on the construction side and on the code enforcement side. He is intended as their one-stop shop. So if they have issues with code enforcement, he, they call him, he works with the code enforcement team, he also works the development services team. So yes, we are trying that on a pilot basis because we don't have, like, you know, if we make one person be a concierge for every single developer in Tulsa, they'll be overwhelmed. We don't have the resources to do that. But we tried with a small group of developers who have anywhere from 10 to 100 properties, they give us the list of properties so that if code enforcement gets a complaint, Jesse will reach out and be like, hey, we got a complaint about this property, yours fix it right away. Code enforcement will still do their normal process, but the hope is that it can get fixed a lot quicker and more efficiently this way. And then the benefit to the developers is, yes, they have an issue with permits or anything they get expedited service. And I think we're working on a draft ordinance, which will come to you all hopefully soon to explore potentially for this group, reduced fees or lien waivers for, you know, that might have been liens that might have been imposed on properties before they acquired them. So we're, we're exploring more options that we can try to provide to incentivize these builders and developers to take dilapidated, problematic, unsafe, unsanitary properties, turn it back into productive, hopefully housing that's affordable. Obviously.
And I think that's the model for some of these developers, so I appreciate that.
Yes.
And finally, the last thing I would say is thank you to Michael, because anytime you go to Michael, he makes sure you know exactly what's going on with some of the concerns that you have. So thank you to you and yourself.[1793.15] Well, you have to come up here, Michael.
Yeah.
Well, folks like Mark Ruiz, you know, who are doing like duplexes and other folks that are doing multiples of things, if they will tell us upfront, you know, that they.
Yeah, there's another, Jared.
Add on to what Jean said, so that she buys that.
You guys know what we try to do in development services. You know, my staff, you know, are always trying to find ways to help people. And if we find out that, hey, we have a development or we have six or seven lots that are all gonna be the same duplexes, then if they'll share that plan with us, rather than just turning stuff in and so staff don't realize that they're all the same, then we can review one and then that speeds up the process on the other ones, because we don't necessarily have to go in there and look at them to the detail that we did on the first one. And, and so when folks like Mark Ruiz reach out to me, then I'm coordinating with staff across the divisions to make sure that everybody understands what's taking place. And it ends up speeding up processes and it, it ends up speeding up our ability to get reviews done. And so, we have that happen on apartments like Vista Shadow Mountain, which is now the Heights of 61st. We have it on many other apartment projects that are going on in the city and other types of projects. And then, I think that, that one thing that I see with out-of-state people versus in-state is out-of-state people ask a lot of questions. They, and it, and it's like what Jean and Travis said is, is they're really excited that a lot of things that other cities make them do, we don't require. But then they ask questions and then they follow everything to the T. Where local folks, just because they've been doing it so long, with, it doesn't matter how many checklists we have, what our website says, how to do the process, they get this feel and they think they know how to do it. And when they turn stuff in, they miss things, you know? And even when we have pre-develop meetings, you know, we go over things and it's like, well, we talked about it at the pre-develop meeting, how do you miss that, you know? And then it comes down just to the lack of, of doing their own QA QC, which is quality assurance and quality control. You know, I'm always saying, kinda kind of taking over, you know, Gary Maguire is, is help us help you, you know?
You have to say it like him.
Yeah.
Help me, help you.
Sometimes, sometimes I do. With my headset on, walking around my office, you know, listening to people on different projects and seeing the knot they've got themselves into and trying to figure out how to undo that knot so that we can get them moving forward. And, and, and it's not, you know, permitting is this huge umbrella that involves so many different folks in the city. And you never know where the knot is of where, of what has been occurred, right? So oftentimes, I'm, I'm spending a lot of time talking to other directors and, and top-level managers in any divisions of departments to try to figure out what the issue is so that we can figure out how to undo the knot. Sometimes the knot gets so tight, you can't figure out a solution, you just gotta cut it and try to piece it back together and say, hey, if you'll do this, if you'll do this, this and this, we will do this, this and this. Because sometimes you get into this position where nobody wants to take a step forward, right? And, and we have to take a leap of faith and say, we'll make this happen in order for you to continue to go forward. And so we spend a lot of time and, you know, I, I think that, yes, I'm the director, so when things get to me, I know a lot about what happens in the city. So I'm able to kind of network and get things done and, and, and work within my department to make things like, like I'm talking about take place. Because oftentimes, the managers or supervisors and staff can only take something so far. They don't really know that they can, you know, how, how to do some steps, right? And so that's where I step in and I'm talking to staff and manager, well, what happens if we do this, this and this? What, what, what impact does that cause? Well, we didn't think about that, so we saw things.
We gotta keep on going.
But, yeah, that's all.
That's all really important. I will say one thing, I've gotta leave for a, a real quick event that's being held at noon. Counselor Gilbert's going to take over. But I wanna advocate real fast for those who sat around this table and gave us a lot of detailed information. They get onsite, they get one piece of advice from an inspector. That inspector says, you have to do this. The next day, another inspector comes out and says, oh, no, you don't have to do that at all. And they get all worked up, there's, there's a lot of points of communication oftentimes that they're telling us about and they get confused. And so, from their standpoint, they need City Hall to speak with one voice. They need one, one thing so that they know how to carry on. They're also very concerned about sometimes only having one point of contact where they think that they can get things off of dead center. And they do, they, they directly say, hey, if I can get to skates, then I can, I can probably get this knot cut and things tied back together. But you, you can't be that guy in all of these cases. So there's a lot of really good constructive feedback. We can say, hey, sometimes it's their fault, they're gonna say sometimes it's our fault, but it's collectively something that we can solve together. And, and I think we're going to make huge strides forward just if we focus in on these ten points. So it's Bellis, Dr. Wright, then Dutton, and Counselor Gilbert's gonna get us back on time. We're like thirty minutes over.
I'll be, not with this lineup.
Oh, this is about thirty minutes.
Everything will be on time now, we're all, he'll be back.
Come on, I gotta babysit too.
Hey, it's Bangler filibuster. Okay, so, um.
Please guys come here.
Yep, I'll be, I'll be.
All right, Counselor Bellis.
Okay, one, also looking at those like software efficiencies, you know, just if that ends up having a budgetary impact or there's a recommendation that we need to look at for this year, just flagging, others hearing that to everybody, that just seems like something to follow up on. I know that, you know, especially since things tend to be licensed, cloud-based, whatever it is, it doesn't have to be a huge cost, but it sounds like potentially an investment that'll be worth making. I know I hear from constituents who are engaging with development services that they just have trouble sometimes, even though you all have like really, I mean, do things like a lot of transparency, where it's like, here's where you are in the process and there's other technology or platform that would help everybody, just flagging that. And then, Counselor Bangler, like, I've now looked one up here and Jean's found with links, because I got super into a quick deep dive about those impact fees, which Oklahoma City uses. There's a website called impactfees.com that has like surveys of like other cities and what they use this for, whether it's like parks, water and sewers, like stormwater, like streets, just like, and I even saw something that did schools, libraries, you know, it can really vary, vary course by your government structure. But that looks like a really interesting revenue stream thing. OKC updated or changed theirs or maybe implemented them in 2017. And I found a PowerPoint that lays out like, you know, their projected revenue from that, which ensures for over time, seems like a really interesting revenue stream to really pursue. That impact fee site has survey data from various years across a long list of municipalities for, and it shows in granular detail what they collect revenue-wise for those things. I just wanna name that, I think that's something that's really worth pursuing as we have revenue discussions.
So apologize for the filibuster comment.
No, I take it back, no, it's, I was just teasing. And again, I've sent you all these surveys that I just found. But anyway, what, I think something that's interesting there that falls within this permitting development process is sometimes, you, you hear this a lot about different things, that if we raise a cost in X, Y, or Z, what if it deters people from investing? But I'm glad Counselor Bangler already brought it, this is money that goes right back into helping those developments in a variety of ways, or also offsets costs for future ones. A whole entire PowerPoint I found, again, that was like presented in 2017 related to the, like what OKC was working on at the time, actually lays out the ways that it then helps future developments, of course. It then adds, of course, to property values as well and how they kind of divvy it up based on if it's for single-family homes versus, you know, other kinds of corporate developments. Anyway, just super interesting revenue stuff we should all pursue. And again, I found that really cool, very in-depth website, impactfees.com, that it seems like we should all delve into, so.
Awesome.
I got excited about the revenue aspect of that.
Okay, all right, Counselor Dr. Wright.
Thank you, thanks for doing the work. I love that you all dovetail with the habitability working group. I think some of these policies might have some crossover. I wanted to make sure that as we talk about incentivizing the things we want, that we also look at the policies that we may need to prevent the activities we don't want. So it doesn't have to be a, a conversation for today, but item number seven on fast-tracking permits, I want to better understand how people become eligible for fast-tracking. We could all think of stalled-out or no-momentum projects in our districts. And I wanna make sure that in, in our efforts to get those moving, we don't put people on a fast track that haven't proven to be trustworthy. Uh, well, I got, I got at least one in my district, but I'm looking at other people that have that. So from a policy standpoint, we definitely need to look at that as we are trying to activate more housing, especially in conversions and infill, right? One issue that came onto our radar over the summer is Partner Tulsa gets Affordable Housing Dollar Funds for us. We're gonna have a item before us. If, if the developers in our rears on a note, they can still qualify for some of these other things because they're not, like, those dollars are in a separate entity. But I just think there's some of these things we need to look at as we're activating all these different dollars. And then the other thing, I don't know how we could maybe put this into the permitting process or if it's already there and I just don't understand it, but how do we get confirmation that they actually have a capital stack that's actually gonna lead to performance and outcomes, rather than just kind of, here's a thing I wanna do? I think of Yale a lot, there's like that big unfinished thing that's there. I think about Forty First Street.
On the west side of Thirty Sixth.
Yeah, there's just a lot of these things and I think they've got their permits. And then, right? But as we're talking about the whole process and for outcomes, I want us to be thoughtful. And there's things beyond everyone's control, but I do think there's probably a Venn diagram of projects and or people behind them that ends up in these little places where we're then looking at code enforcement or chronic nuisance, things which also cost us time and money and have impacts in the community. So it might be more of a thirty thousand mile view from this, which is very technical, but those are the things that popped up for me. So I think from a policy standpoint, those are the things I'd like to look at. And when it concerns our dollars, it's the things like you're talking about, like, we have some projects that have been ready to go, but we can't because of infrastructure. And so I want us to be able to look at, like, if they're done all these steps and we're ready to go, like, how do we go, oh, we have these dollars that are gonna come for this, for our side of the fence in two years? What can we do to get them going faster? Because time is money, time is money. And that's my frustration that I'm hearing from developers who are either trying to make stuff go in my district or live in my district trying to make stuff go in your district or Counselor Harper's district. And there's, to your point, a plan, we've got design, we know it's coming, but it's like, how many things are we gonna say, sorry, we can't get there with you?
Right.
I know on one parcel in my district, we have turned away three hundred units of new apartments at least two or three times. I think fourth time might be the charm, but we shouldn't have that.
Yep, I agree.
So, thank you.
Good points. Thank you, Counselor Dutton?
Yeah, so I was going to ask initially about the community builder pilot program, so I'm glad that you brought that up. Back in February, I know it was brought to council and there was discussion about a suggested six-month or two-month check-in and the possibility of monthly updates to capture early operational issues. Is that something that you guys are still working on? Because we haven't had any updates. And the portal to access, to actually track the housing publicly and what's actually going on with the program so that we can see outcomes? I haven't, I don't have any information on that. And I think it would be helpful, because Housing Forward is partnering in that, and that it would also give us insight as to the actual vacancies and what exact permitting processes are happening, fast-track permitting processes that are happening for these vacancies.
Sure, so there's a lot there. So the community builder pilot program took a little bit longer than we hoped to get off the ground. We just had it launched, I think, last month, I don't remember.
September?
It's September, October, I think it was September, maybe. So we haven't, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out time to update you all, but it has launched. We just, I just had a conversation with Jesse, kind of who's the concierge admitting to that program, the point of contact, the developers who applied and who's talked to and communicated with. So we'll work on getting you an update on that.
Well, that would be really helpful. I mean, in that way, we would know progress and who's doing what, because I think that we're still kind of in the lurch as to who's doing what and where and the cost involved as well. And the pilot program, how long is it expected to go?
Um, I don't know that we've set a date or open-ended, we'll see how it goes, we'll tweak as needed and we'll continue to keep going at this one, keep you updated.
What's the, as soon as we can get an update on?
Um, I don't know, maybe January, just knowing like schedules, yeah, January, February, we'll, we'll work on figuring that out with Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Archie, this is our last one on this item, because we gotta move on.
Absolutely, so thank you all for being here, very great presentation. We, you know, we have the housing goals, we talked at the YMCA concerning permitting fees. I don't know, I call them the Midtown McMansions. And, and my question is, thinking about our, our density goals, is there room to adjust some of those fees to sort of encourage folks, you know, for density? Or is, or is that also with impact fees, is that kind of rolled into that or?
So similar conversations, but different, I think, right? Impact fees, we don't currently charge, that would be something we would have to decide as a policy to start implementing. Permit fees, we do currently charge, but again, that'd be a policy discussion to determine whether we adjust them based on size or affordability or things like that. I think you all would have to determine that, so that'd be an ordinance that you would all have to vote on. But we are exploring that option to try to, to try to come up with policies. And, yeah, I agree, we're trying to figure out every way that we can incentivize positive behavior, especially things that we want, goals towards housing and housing that's more affordable and make negative behavior, you know, less, you know, disincentivize negative behavior. So that is, that is a good idea and it's something we're looking at.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sorry to keep you, sorry to take you off schedule.
You, you weren't the one, it's okay, it's okay.
It's Phil's fault.
Yep, so, that's why I'm gonna stay here. Item number seven, presentation and update from council representatives on the Route 66, Commission on their, or their Designees Regarding Commission Activities, Current Projects, and Centennial Events. Archie, Dutton, Gilbert, and Bangler are on that.
Okay, now you're really gonna see a filibuster.
Oh, man, it's lunchtime.
I'm gonna set my timer.
Well, it's not my fault we're off schedule, so don't blame me.
Okay, you got ten minutes, let's go.
All right, obviously, so obviously Beth and Brandon are there as council staff. So thank you for their cat herding skills, because they keep us on track, keep us on agenda, best and cement. There's a lot associated with this. To each of the counselors who, you know, are able to get there as their schedules will allow, thank you for being on there. And to the council as a whole, thank you for funding the centennial, right? And making it a priority, because Route 66 is a tourist asset and as I learned in Detroit, when we did that inner-city visit, when we invest in our assets, we attract more tourism dollars, so. And then, of course, the commission, and, and their work on this as well. And then, of course, the three grant funding sources that we have, the SOD, Vision, and Neon Sign Grants. Those have been great programs to revitalize the corridor.
And special events?
Yes, and special events, thank you, which we just talked about the other day. So I'll jump into this real quick, so we're gonna talk about ARPA beautification funds, the Route 66 cruise, and then, of course, the mural project that's come out, which is about a hundred thousand dollars, if you're not aware of it. So two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds were allocated by the ARPA Working Group as part of Route 66 beautification to prepare for the centennial of 2026. One hundred K of that is allocated to Public Works for street sweeping and tree planting strategically throughout the city. Public Works is spending about fifty-seven thousand and with, up with trees to plant a hundred trees, prune trees along the corridor and provide twenty stump, so, yeah, I can't even speak, removals and grindings of those stumps. And so, the challenge that we had initially with the RFP in the two hundred thousand dollars was the second half of that two hundred thousand dollars and what that was initially going, going to go towards. And so, Counselor Dutton and I and Archie and Gilbert talked about how we should reappropriate those funds specifically so that they actually went towards beautification. So you'll see the, that proposal. The balance of that hundred K is allocated to street sweeping every two weeks along the route all through the city of Tulsa, end to end. The ARPA funding will pay from January 26th to the end of June. And then, of course, the normal Public Works street sweeping fund will continue throughout the rest of that year. So the intent in using that second. So the intent in using that second hundred K, just like we talked about, part of that being the trees and all that stuff. The forty, we're asking for an allocation of forty thousand for vinyl wrapped traffic control boxes along the route corridor. And I think that comes out to forty different ones with little to no public art. The timeframe will take about two and a half to three and a half months for the RFP and selection, artist contracting and installation. And of course, there's some constraints around weather for those to adhere to those structures. So we wanna make sure we have all that in place before the centennial. Forty-seven thousand, four eighty-six, seventy-six for eight to twelve new historic markers that highlight untold stories along Tulsa's historic route. And so those stretch all along, all along Tulsa. And the timeframe for installation is twenty-six weeks. So definitely wanna make sure we get that done, those two projects done, in my opinion. Staying on your script as much as I can. The remainder of those funds, twelve thousand, five thirteen, will be used for the replacement of security cameras and upgraded footage storage for the Cyrus Avery Centennial Plaza. If you know anything about that, there's been some destruction and some issues along that, in that plaza. And so this will kind of help provide some security and oversight to that. So there, we're not constantly having to pour funds to maintain that. Vandalism, obviously, as I just stated, is probably one of the biggest concerns. And this will take about thirty days for installation. Then, of course, the big coup de grace of it all is the Centennial Cruise. And when I heard this initially in the commission, when it came to us, it wasn't fully baked out. So we've been discussing this for the last two years. As soon as it came to the table, and I immediately got excited about it. If you were at the press conference that we had, was it last month? Last month, we did the press conference out at the Admiral Twin in Councilor Dutton's district. We talked about what that cruise path will look like. And again, this, the restriction of this was funding and the logistics. So even though it wasn't gonna stretch the entire corridor, this would allow for us to add the other portion, which we can't really announce specifically, but it is gonna be a world-wrecking, world-record-breaking attempt. And so there's obviously a missing piece. What's that?
We hope we don't have wrecks.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it should be going slow enough that we shouldn't have that problem. So there's gonna be a lot put in, poured into this. And I think if you went to the press conference at the Admiral Twin, the backdrop that was set up for that just ensures me that we're on the right path and that we should see significant return of investment. So the five hundred thousand dollars between the Route sixty-six commission reserve and three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars fully funds that specific event. And so I fully expect us to see a full return of investment on this. And so, let me see. So, oh, that is a good point. The city has allocated, which is us, five hundred K, so of course, I appreciate that, which consists a hundred and eighty K from the Vision Tulsa, two thousand sixteen, and three hundred and fourteen from the Vision twenty twenty-five Route sixty-six. So, and those really old Vision funds, to your little point here, your notation is are from two thousand and three. So, let's see. And then finally, the last piece is the mural. It's about a hundred thousand dollars. And believe it or not, this will focus mainly in East Tulsa. So there'll be a significant investment. I think it touches one, three, five, and six, if I remember correctly. And so a hundred thousand dollars of Vision Tulsa, two thousand sixteen, funding will be used to do that. Twelve murals will be strategically placed throughout the city. And select, they were selected by the city staff and approved by the commission. Selective locations heavily focused on, like I said, the eastern corridor. So I would entertain any questions.
Thank you very much.
The visuals for this are, I love them, yeah. Good job.
Marissa did such a good job. This is not me. I did the content. She did the design, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on this item?
See, look how efficient I am.
I know.
I got like five minutes.
You didn't, yeah, see, man. Okay, thank you for listening and following directions. You still don't get a gold star. Item number eight.
The cats growl and dogs growl.
Discussion of a long-term funding strategy or strategies to support tourism efforts in the city of Tulsa. I'm gonna hand it over to Sarah and Jack.
Yeah, so the timing of us having to post our agendas and your Wednesday meeting, I wasn't sure how many follow-up questions you have from Hotel Motel. There was a question that we documented and it was just on effective date for Hotel Motel. So right now, that's proposed as a February election. If you decide to proceed with that, there was a question on, on with that one versus the sales tax. So Jack has looked into that and has an update for you all.
Yes, the ordinance is currently drafted, has an effective date, excuse me, of July one, the start of the fiscal year, the start of calendar quarter. Statute requires excise taxes to begin at the beginning of the calendar quarter. There's also a provision for sales taxes that you have to provide sixty days' notice to vendors. We've looked at that and we think because the city implements and the taxes remitted directly to the city rather than through the tax commission, we think we can avoid the sixty-day notice provision, but we think we still have to have the effective date at the start of a calendar quarter. So the upshot of that is July one would be fine, but I think also April one, if you really wanted to accelerate this, would, would work. We looked at Oklahoma City. They adopted their ordinance on May twenty-first. The election was three months later, on August twenty-seventh. And their effective date was the start of the calendar quarter, October one, which was a month after the election. So I think would be consistent with that if you wanted to accelerate that to April one. I think we could make that change in the, in the ordinance.
Hold on. So, sorry.
That's okay.
I have Dexter Wright and then, Dutton.
Since we know Oklahoma City's in it, the business impact of this, is it, does they go in their like computer system and change the rate? Or, you know, I'm just thinking, like, when we change addresses on businesses, it's a long process. And that's really surprising, what you just shared about Oklahoma City.
I think it's, yes, and I think a large number of hoteliers are kind of supportive of this and so we'll, we'll be aware of it.
It's like a fast implementation for them, it sounds like.
I, we could follow up. I know Renee's done a lot of discussing of this with the hotels, so I could just reach out to her too and.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about these like conventions that have already booked, right? That's a significant, like, if you're bringing ten thousand people to town, that's a significant increase on their budget for like the room blocks and stuff, just from my experience of being on that side. So from the hoteliers' implementation, that's a question, but also like, what are the impacts? And maybe Renee's like, she's not worried about it, but we should just find out. I'm an unintended consequences logic model person, so I just wanna, I, I think it's smart to, to do, but I also don't know about a February day. If we call a special for Hotel Motel in February, there's costs associated with that. That's what, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something? So I just, when we're literally looking for, for dollars to do a lot of these priorities, I just wanna be mindful about the sense of urgency about all of these kind of revenue discussions. But I thank you for the quick turnaround on that question and it's on our agenda. It came on our draft agenda. So we'll get to talk about it more next Wednesday, so we have some time.
Yep. Okay, Councilor Dutton? So I was, I'm sure, can we have an election on one item and not the other? P.S.? Okay, so.
It's been proposed that they are coupled together, but.
Right, so we don't have to. Okay, yeah. So if we were to vote on the hotelier Hotel Motel tax in February, that would still cost a hundred and fifty thousand or a special election?
February is a special.
Because you have to have your precinct staff, your ballots.
Right, okay. And then if we were to have the election in April, that would not, would that still be a special election?
It would be a municipal special election.
Which would cost.
But there's other elections going on in the municipality.
Okay.
The point I was trying to make earlier this week is some of us do not have a TPS school board race.
Yeah, right, right.
So when the, when the idea is talked about, like, oh, we already have one. We can just go with that. It's like, no, there'll still be costs involved.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
But what I heard from Jack is like, let's say we did an April one, then we would still trigger on July one because we're going with the fiscal quarters. So when we think about when collections could come in, there is a bit of, I guess you're saying if we go February, we could start April collections.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to be clear on my understanding that we could definitely separate the motel hotel tax.
Do all of it, none of it, some of it?
Yeah.
Some other things?
I will remind everybody, February is notoriously very low voter turnout.
Yeah, I agree.
It is the strategy, but on something like Hotel Motel, which we're pretty much all in agreement, we need it. What if, because it's low voter turnout, it doesn't?
Right, right.
Pass, right? I mean, I just think there's a lot of considerations.
There are.
Of February ballot.
We also have a municipal race election day in August.
Yeah.
For all municipal questions, concerns. Well, I'll just keep saying it. It's already on the budget to pay for it.
Well, then we wouldn't have to pay for it, right?
Well, we do have to pay for it, but it's.
Not the hundred and fifty thousand.
I mean, it would be for all the things, all the municipal questions.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, yeah. But those are good questions.
I was thinking about how these all interact.
Sure.
Yeah.
And we do have an ONG franchise agreement that has to, I don't know what the timing of that is, but that is also something we put on the ballot.
That's being negotiated.
For twenty-six.
Looking at August.
We're looking at it.
Oh, we're getting at August, so lots of questions. Makes a lot of sense to be efficient.
Yeah, it's not upcoming.
Yeah, okay.
Ding 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 ding.
The people who really care about Tulsa will show up in August.
Yeah.
They will. And that also gives us time to educate them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that is one. Charter amendment together.
That is one thing that I'm, I'm working on as like, with constituents. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
Overlapping topic, I'm so excited to be here.
I'm trying to.
I said sorry, so that's another thing with everyone.
Thank you.
So I, one of, I've got, and I'm sure we all have a lot of constituent questions about right timing and all sorts of next steps related to this whole array of topics. And one of the things I know is also that from the time we determine that something's on a ballot, city resources can't then, like, the education and discussions that we might wanna go have about all of these different. It has to be external because then it's, from the time you go, it's gonna be on a ballot, now it's campaigning and city resources can't go to it. So I just wanna factor that into when we're talking about timing for whether it's like lodging tax or any other of these ballot issues, is that from the second we draw that line and say, hey, if we're gonna put this on a ballot and it's gonna be on this date, then those kinds of town hall functions with city like support and time and staffing, that shifts. And so that really does affect our ability to have community conversations within a city-supported way. And I think that's a really key thing for us to think about as we think about the timing of when we're putting things onto different elections dates or, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Dexter Wright?
Can, can we get from Renee McKennie in her next week? So it is Route sixty-six Centennial. Obviously, people come to see Route sixty-six now. They'll come in twenty twenty-seven, whatever. But is there already an idea in our hotelier community of like that peak time that people are staying in hotels? And if the answer is yes, like, from a revenue standpoint, it's like, oh, we should increase so we get the revenue. From a, welcome to our city, you've planned your family trip here for two years and now, I don't know even what the impact on like a regular person's bill would be. That I just don't understand. And is it enough to be like, well, I'll go stay down the street in the next largest city that doesn't have that on their hotel motel, right? I mean.
It's like four dollars and twenty-five cents per.
Hundred bucks, right.
So to your point, for the centennial, that May thirtieth date is going to be our expected high point.
Well, I don't know. That's maybe the start from the hotelier standpoint. I don't know.
Right.
Like, that's what we're focused on.
That's gonna be our high point.
Yeah, that's what we're focused on, but I mean, summer travel also tends to be the higher time. I just wanna make sure again, if we can just say it's not, it's negligible or it would be beneficial to do it, you know. What Jack was saying, I don't know if you heard it, but if we go February, then collections could start April. If we do later than February, then the next opportunity would be July because they're on fiscal quarters for collections.
Yeah, and, and that's what I tried, that's what I asked Renee last, well, Wednesday. It seems like it was last Wednesday.
Two days ago.
Yeah, two days ago. And yeah, February would allow us to collect whenever the centennial was taking place.
Sooner, yeah.
Uh, Councilor Bush?
Quick question, just 'cause I knew. Do Airbnbs, VRBOs, do they get taxed? Is that part of Hotel Motel?
If they have five rooms or more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? We just have. I just want one comment that we have a lot of affordable motels on the east side of District Three. So that, that four percent might not even be noticed. I just had to throw that out there.
Or like those fifty-dollar a night Airbnbs.
Well, if they have five rooms though. Five rooms or five bedrooms.
Rooms total.
Wow. As long as they're not a studio.
All right, moving on. Item number nine, facilitated discussion and debrief of the agenda items listed above as well as discussion of next steps and items for future consideration in the FY twenty-six, twenty-seven budget process.
So I think for today, because we are running up, I know people had some, some times that they needed to go. Let's kind of quickly go over some follow-up items from the earlier discussion and make sure we captured everything. Currently, the mayor council retreat, the next one, I think is held on January ninth is the date on your calendar. And so we obviously have time to talk in December if we wanna do some more preparation for that retreat. But recapping today's conversation on early settlement, we want to start now reaching out to our partners rather than waiting into the future. We talked about our overarching public safety goals and there's potentially two paths to those, that more traditional view of public safety versus kind of those community indicators of public safety, quality indicators and neighborhood condition index. On mayor's office of children and family, we wanna keep monitoring our initial investment and those outcomes. We didn't say this actually in homelessness earlier, but I wrote it down. Look at all of you just taking pictures. It's so cute. I wanted, well, yeah, I wanted to take a picture of you taking a picture.
I don't wanna be a homeless.
So you didn't say this today on homelessness, but I, I've watched a few of your discussions on that. And one, I, I've heard kind of this theme of I want, kind of an overall comprehensive financial strategy on homelessness. What is our one-time investment? What are our ongoing? What are our potential revenue buckets for that? Not just kind of programmatically. And then another was actually, Councilor Bengal, I think you said this the other day, more of a three H two-point-oh. I call it a comprehensive collaboration as we implement like so many great programs to keep not only us internally, but our external partners all on the same page moving forward. On animal welfare, your kind of two takeaways that, that we documented today were upstream investments of spay neuter. If we did, you know, one large investment, how does that impact even the staffing strategy? The kind of staff, the number of staff that we need? And then the state policy and regulations, what could change there that could really help us out, especially as an urban area versus rural? Fines and fees, the big push to finish our program evaluation. Looking also at how can we reduce cases through different methods that municipal court mentioned versus increasing operational cost. There's definitely a trend in jail volume when they talk about our ability to handle that. I don't think they're talking about the people in the jail working. I think they're talking about the court staff to handle a jail volume and the public defenders needed and the additional court staff to help process those. Get a check-in update once that new collections ordinance has had time to really go into. Um, get a check-in update once that new, um, collections ordinance has had time to really go into effect. Um, and then the further breakdown, which they have, of the demographic program use, but just getting you, um, those items. On pre-hospital, um, it's, we have an update on those two job descriptions, but there was a concern on funding positions and then the time it has taken to get those job descriptions. So maybe, um, that might be even outside of, of pre-hospital, a look at that, continuing on the RFP process as planned. And then there was a cost-benefit, um, discussion between different technologies um, and the capabilities that they offer. And then Gelato was just a who has access to that kind of update that we'll look at getting. Then we moved on to development services. Um, we will issue that report back to those people who donated their time to us um, to give us their input and their feedback. Um, we're, we'll say Thanksgiving, um, as that time. Um, looking at policy, we all, we all learned a new website today, ImpactFees.com.
I'm super. It was dot com.
Dot com. And, and Councilor, maybe Bellis and Bengal have, have started something new here on.
I think so. I'm already talking to Housing Board about finding us, like, an expert to talk about it, so we could, like, follow up more.
Yeah, so.
They did flag that we shouldn't apply it to affordable housing projects, though, which is fair.
Yeah. Um, and then, um, there was just a flag for software budget impacts, if there are any. Um, looking at making sure those that we are fast-tracking still are meeting our community standards, so understanding better the eligibility requirements for that. Um, and accountability generally for development, um, the examples of projects that start, um, and then they kind of seem to sit there. And so, um, understanding what we could do at the municipal level, and then just a general community builder program update, the project launched in, I think they said September, so probably a February update. Um, and then Hotel Motel is on your 1 o'clock next week. Um, I, I don't know that Renee is available. Uh, hopefully someone from the chamber will be here. Um, but looking at the impact of election timing and also some of those hotel peak times, um, were the follow-ups from that.
Councilor Dexter Wright.
Thank you. On the Hotel Motel discussion too, as I understand it, some of the negotiations that are happening right now to bring in hoteliers are predicated on some sort of rebate strategy in the capital stack. And, and so that timing thing, I think we need to understand again.
Yeah.
Like, does a delay then, like, lose something that we're trying to get done? Or does it just delay it?
Yeah, I've heard that mentioned for, like, two larger potential developments, where, like, they're kind of banking on an increase in the timing factors.
Project analysis.
I think they're using the concept of a increase as a carrot to incentivize jumping in.
Yeah.
So. Helps inform our decisions if we know all the implications.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Ms. Sarah? Yes, Councilor Bengal?
Just 1.1, Gelato, I kind of want to add that to the homelessness thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, I think the question was, who in TPD has access and who in the other provider space?
Maybe it's like a crossway bump for Tulsa, too. Like, just like getting an understanding of how integrated it is.
Okay.
Because I brought that up to Mark Smith when I had any one time we ever.
Because it's hard, like, to pay for. Yeah, well, and it's different case management software, it's like, it's like what talks to each other? How are people doing this?
There's case management.
Yeah. I really enjoyed this process and I'm really grateful to our staff and to all of you for coming in an extra day, but this is a different way of doing it and I approve.
This is really good.
This is good.
It's very, lots of good information coming out today. So I, I know we all have our own little working groups and everything and we all know what each other, you know, those working groups are doing, but for all of us to have this discussion and transparency to everybody else of what's been, what everyone has been working on has been fantastic.
Oh, I got one more comment.
And we need this kind of time for tutorials.
I'd like to thank the Vice Chair for, like, shortening this a little bit.
Yeah.
The immediate power has her favor.
That's, that's why I, I have been subjected to this.
Cheer him in, whatever.
Councilor Hall Harford.
Can we take some of these sausage? You may take some sausage.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, item 10, we're adjourned.